I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Cherryville on September the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. I would ask everyone that's here to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Tom Hobbly, a Saint John's Lutheran church, followed by our pledge of allegiance and please remain standing after our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Bean, and just take a point of personal privilege to say that as we gather here on this September the eleventh, most of us and many of us in this room remember where we were on September the eleventh, two thousand one. I remember when my children and my wife came home from school, I was living in Pinehurst, North Carolina, and I remember when they got inside the doors, I was never going to let them walk out again. I was, they were there where I could protect them, and that's how the way many of us are and were at that point in time. And so I want to begin this invocation with a moment of silence, a time of silence to remember and to honor those emergency medical technicians, the firefighters, the police officers, and all who lost their lives, and the people who were in the World Trade Centers on that day. So let us pray. Almighty and ever-living God, we give you thanks. We thank you that you bless each of us in so, so many ways. You have created this world for us to be a part of and placed us right in the middle, and Lord, we thank you. And we thank you that you do give us the air we breathe, the water we drink, the food we eat, and those things that nourish us, and we are blessed, and we thank you. And as this council meets tonight and these folks meet, we give you thanks that you have blessed us by placing us here in the middle of Cherryville, North Carolina. We pray that as the council makes decisions, as people talk, that you would remind us all that, that you're always with us. Then we can place all our trust and our hope in you, and you're here for us and with us. And we do remember, Lord, all those who lost their lives on September the eleventh, two thousand one. And we pray that you be with families who are still reeling. We pray that you be with people who are still hurting. But we pray that you be with each of us. We pray that you would remind us that you're our Savior. And if we can place all our trust and our hope in you, and you're here, here for us and with us today and always, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And not to be repetitious, but our city did not have a formal remembrance ceremony this year of nine eleven. Our crowds over the years had diminished somewhat, so we felt like it would have more impact if we did it maybe once every five years. But we have a council member here tonight that was present that day on nine eleven, when the tragedy happened and we lost all those lives and those victims and their families were impacted by that terrible deed that happened. And he would like to, at this time, do officially from our city council and our city of Cherryville, another prayer for our nine eleven victims and their families.
Let's join our hearts together again, please. Heavenly Father, we stand before you tonight with heavy hearts, remembering those tragic events from two thousand one. Father, as an eyewitness, I know how it can change a life. Father, we know that so many thousands of people lost their lives that day. And Father, right now, we pray for their families. We especially pray for those men and women that weren't in the wrong place at the wrong time. We pray for those police officers, those firefighters, those border guard workers. We rushed to that scene not thinking about their own lives, but to try to save the life of someone else. So Father, we especially lift up their families tonight, and we pray that you bless them in a special way, knowing that their loved one sacrificed their life to try to save another. Father, we pray that you would just fill their hearts with fond memories and not the tragic loss that happened. Father, we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus, who went to that cross not thinking of himself, but thinking of the sacrifice that he would make for every person that's ever been born on this earth. So Father, we thank you tonight for Jesus. In his name, amen.
You may be seated. The first item on our agenda that will be addressed by council is the approval of our agenda as presented. What is the council's pleasure on approving our agenda? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and there is none. Okay, we'll move to item five on our agenda, and that is the approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of August the seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and B, our city council work session meeting of August the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. What is the council's pleasure on approving of the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve both sets of minutes, the city council regular meeting of August the seventh, city council work session meeting of August the twenty-ninth. Approve them at the same time as ready.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented of A, our city council regular meeting, August the seventh, and B, our city council work session meeting of August twenty-nine. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and there is none. It is unanimous. We'll move on to the mayor's comments. I would like to welcome all of you that are in attendance here tonight. I have some exciting news to announce concerning the new gym to be built in our city. This past Friday, city manager Brian Dalton, city councilman Malcolm Parker, and I met with the Larry and Carolyn Summer family. After several prior phone discussions and requests from the city, the Summer family have agreed to donate the land on Academy Street across from Dr. White's office on Oak Street for construction of a recreation park that will house a new gym, a dog park, and a play area for children. Paperwork, including some stipulations by the Summer family, is in the process of being drawn up to be signed by all parties. Mr. Tom Summer is going to have a land appraised for tax purposes, and the city has agreed to pay for this. The plans have already gone out to custom builders, Beam Construction, Beam Construction, and Walker Construction for bids and pricing for construction of the complex. The complex will certainly be an exciting and needed recreation addition and parking area for our city and its citizens. Also in recreation news, city manager Dalton and I met with Beam Brothers several weeks ago at the H.T. Whitefield to discuss repairing or building a new Little League monument at the entrance of the walkway to the baseball fields. Dr. White has agreed to cover the cost of this project. Dr. White also has expressed interest in getting involved and helping the city's Little League program to make it much more successful. The final two basketball goals have been installed at Aaron Moss Park. The city has two new ones at Westgate and four new ones at Edwards Park for a total of eight new goals at three different city parks. The basketball courts will be newly painted at Edwards Park with the Chavis Middle School colors. The Main Street design team has voted to go with Paradise Landscaping to redo the flower beds on Main Street. They will be redesigning all the beds from Depot to Mulberry with new plants, mulch, and a maintenance program. The city will have the responsibility of watering the beds. A long-awaited opening of Heat's Fish Box is now a reality. The business has experienced an overwhelming success for the opening and looks forward to continued success. The future Mexican restaurant to be located at the Old Pepperoni Express has received their permit for the remodeling and has plans to open as soon as December of this year. A new golf shop has opened in the belt building, and a new florist shop is starting remodeling at the old Bella Verde building and will open soon. The city has received plans for the new Piedmont Lithium splash pad to be located just above the city swimming pool. The new facility will have a baseball theme, and completion is expected for early spring of two thousand twenty-four. This past Thursday, city manager Dalton and I met with Lincolnon mayor Ed Hadley and Lincolnon city manager Richie Haynes to discuss the internet agreement that we currently have with the city of Lincolnon. This agreement is due to expire next year. After a lengthy discussion, all parties came to a new agreement that will aid both cities for future expansion. City manager Dalton and I would like to express our thanks for the new agreement that will result in substantial savings to Cherryville when we are forced to use the interconnect. This new negotiation will be presented to our council at the October council meeting. In my ten years as mayor, I do not think I have seen so many new businesses deciding to make Cherryville their home. I want to say that this council has been working overtime to move our city in a positive direction, and they deserve the support of all our citizens. This council has and will continue to make bold decisions that will benefit our citizens and our city's future development. And this concludes the mayor's comments for this evening. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. If there's any citizen that would like to speak, please do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and comments will be strictly held to five minutes. So at this time, do I have any citizen that would like to speak? Maybe that's a good sign. Doesn't seem like anyone wants to speak, okay? We'll move on to ours. Next item is special recognition and reference to advanced law enforcement certification. And at this time, I would like for Officer Parton to please come forward. Do you have any family members that would like to tell a pause up? Officer Parton, on behalf of myself and the city council members, I would like to present to you the Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. This certificate is issued by the North Carolina Criminal Justice and Training Standards Commission. And I have the letter that was sent to you from the commission, and it reads as follows: Dear Police Officer Parton, The Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission recently met in regular session and accepted the nomination of those candidates qualified to receive the Law Enforcement Officer's Advanced Certificate and the Criminal Justice Officer's Advanced Certificate. After examination of your credentials, the commission unanimously approved issuance of the Advanced Certificate to you. Congratulations on this great achievement. The Advanced Certificate award provides recognition of the competence and achievements of eligible officers across the state of North Carolina. This award requires substantive professional experience, many hours of additional training, and often a higher level of formal education. To meet these requirements is a worthy, worthy commendation. Your dedication to your chosen profession is evidenced in the fact that you are one of a very select group of officers to receive this honor. It is with great pride that I offer you congratulations on the attainment of this most significant award. Congratulations again, and I look forward to witnessing your continued success, and this is signed sincerely by Jeffrey Smith, Director. Congratulations, Officer. And at this time, our chief minister has a few words that he would like to say.
The Advanced Certificate is the highest level of certification for law enforcement officer candidacy through the state. It takes numerous hours of additional training. You have to have so many years of service. Jason has completed all of that. He has nine and a half years, or nine, nine and a half years of service with us and about twelve hundred hours, or over twelve hundred hours, of continuing education training classes. Jason's a very valued officer with us. He has a great reputation throughout the community. He always goes well and beyond, and Jason, thank you for what you do.
And our next item is again recognition, and this is a proclamation honoring the fifty years of the Cherryville Little Theater. And we have members of the theater if you'd like to come up at this time. Would you like to say your names?
Connie Fox.
I'm Angie Nolan.
Okay, and this is a proclamation honoring fifty years with the Cherryville Little Theater. Whereas the Cherryville Little Theater was formed by a group of local citizens in nineteen seventy-two. In May of nineteen seventy-three, the first production, Bill Simon's Barefoot in the Park, was held in the auditorium at Cherryville East Elementary School. And whereas, the theater then used the West School auditorium for five years through a lease agreement with the Gaston County School Board. In the late nineteen seventies, the city of Cherryville purchased the West School buildings and properties from the county. Upon the city's purchase, the auditorium was officially named the Cherryville Municipal Auditorium. The building is commonly referred to as the Little Theater, as the Cherryville Theater has been the primary occupant and still calls the facility home today. The Cherryville Little Theater was incorporated in nineteen seventy-eight and still operates as an IRS 501(c) not-for-profit corporation. And whereas, the Cherryville Little Theater has remained consistently active since its first production in May of nineteen seventy-three. For the past fifty years, there has been a dedicated and vigorous membership, working with an active board of directors that provides oversight and management of theater operations. There have never been any paid positions, with volunteers providing all the work and effort to sustain the organization. And whereas, the theater has produced one hundred and forty different plays or shows with averages of three performances per play and around four hundred and twenty performances on the theater stage, and I've been through many of those myself. On average, with an estimate of eighty audience members present per performance, over thirty-three thousand people have attended theater performances. Though difficult to quantify, an estimated twenty people assist with every play, so more than two thousand eight hundred people have worked as cast and crew members. Over the years, the theater has averaged almost three productions or shows per year. In two thousand sixteen, the theater produced six different plays on stage. This number was equaled in twenty nineteen as well. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cherryville mayor and the city council hereby recognizes the Cherryville Little Theater with fifty years of consistent operation. The theater has far exceeded the life expectancy of most community theater groups, and Cherryville is proud that the theater is a large part of our community. And this is signed by Paige H. Green, certified municipal clerk, North Carolina certified municipal clerk, city clerk of Cherryville, and H.L.B. Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much. We appreciate your partnership, continued support. We hope for fifty more years, and we invite everybody to come see our fiftieth anniversary celebration on September twenty-second and twenty-third at the theater.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten on our agenda, and that is consideration of performance to planning and zoning board. And we do have our planning and zoning director, Richard Egan, is here. So that's pages seventeen and eighteen in your packet. If the city council member had any questions for our planning and zoning director in reference, and the name being submitted is Peter Delver Jackson. It will say eight fifteen, J.C. Delver. What's the council's pleasure on a form of this Jackson? Now the motion is set. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. Okay, we'll move on, and Senator Richard was up there already, and item eleven is considerations to set a date for a public hearing. And this is in reference to rezoning and evaluating North Mulberry Street from General Manufacturing to Arnhem or Residential Line. Richard, you have the form now.
If you look on page two, you'll see that the property question is surrounded to the north and also to the west of Arnhem Lost. I think my dad, when the county did a map and just set this parcel off, because it is connected, this, like I said, to the north and to the west, the better than that, Arnhem is to the... Recently, the tree fell into this home, and the road demolished, and they'll do something to it, and to do so, they need to have it rezoned, Arnhem. And to do so, they need to have it resigned to R-line. So I'd like to have a public hearing day set, so I can do the advertising in the paper.
Okay, so you're recommending that we set this on our next council meeting of October the ninth?
Yes, sir.
For the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this would be from General Manufacturing to R-line, which is single and two-family residential?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does the council have any questions for Planning and Zoning Director Eagle? If not, though, I have a motion from council to set this public hearing for October the ninth.
They motioned to set the hearing for October the ninth, don't they, parcel of par three?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in the second to set a public hearing for October the ninth, two thousand twenty-three, for the, uh, public hearing of the rezoning of five eighteen North Mulberry. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and there is none. Okay, we'll move on to item twelve. Again, we have Richard up there at the podium. And this is the consideration that we discussed in work session of, uh, the street or alley closing application fees. And, uh, Richard, if you will give us a read back of that discussion?
Well, I sent out messages through the system, and I personally called Gastonia Shelby in Lincoln. And as you can see, Gastonia had a fee of five hundred and sixty dollars, which covered the application and the advertising cost. Shelby had seven hundred and fifty, which also covered the application and advertising cost. Lincoln was fifty dollars for the application, then they would wait. They said their fees changed from time to time, but it, they would then add the advertising cost to that, which would probably come out to five, fifty, seven hundred fifty. And High Point, North Carolina, a long ways away, they had five hundred dollars, which covers the application and the advertising cost. And my suggestion was, for a street or alley that's not paid, the fee would be five hundred dollars, you know, to cover the advertising cost. But if it was a paid street, I think we should go for a thousand dollars. That way it would cover the advertising cost, the application, and any lost power funds associated, associated with that street. And that's what I'm asking for, which is all your recommendation, with the five hundred and one thousand.
Okay, the only question I have, uh, how long do we have to advertise that?
Four weeks.
Four weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's a substantial amount of money could build up in those four times to advertise?
Yes, sir.
And I understand the thousand for the paid street is because that no longer is qualified for power funds money?
That would be correct.
So we're gonna lose the money that we would get from the state for, for the paid road?
Correct.
Okay, any council member have any questions for, uh, Planning and Zoning Director Eagle?
We don't have that many requests usually to close a street, or have you...
I had two in the ten years I was here previously. I haven't happened after that.
Oh, we have one right now, closing easement.
There's a request for a easement that's unpaid. You know, I've got the application ready to give to the individual once your, arrive at a fee.
Only two that I can think of, I mean, saying we were talking about it, Modern Polymers, when they built their, uh, new building, and then it's second Baptist Church.
Yes.
That was for a parking area?
Yes, sir.
For the church?
Yes, sir.
Those are only two I know of.
That's the two I know of.
One two I remember.
But we have someone who would do it right now, there's... We will fill out the application.
And that's just, and it is more or less, it's an unpaid ride.
Since they came before we did this process, is this fee gonna apply there?
I think it should.
Well, that makes it sound like they're bad bothered in, since they came. Brought it up before we even did it.
At that point, you'll be taking on the possibility of the advertising costs.
I'm not saying that.
They're part of the city, you see.
But they have not made application yet. They have just approached us for an application.
You told them you didn't have an application at this point? They needed to wait? Is that what happened?
I was not here then, but I think the City Council...
We tagged it.
Tagged it.
Till we could discuss it more.
Yeah, but that came up because of this person wanting to make an application.
That's true.
We've never tried it before. And now, if they want to do it, we're gonna change the rule of charge.
Um, I know the one at Modern Polymers was done per the city's request. Modern Polymers did not apply for it. I do not know about that.
Also closed the road, second Baptist.
I remember who made that request.
It was happening as I retired.
Church made that request.
Second Baptist. Well, I would need direction from council to accept or decline the proposal from the Planning and Zoning Director. His request is for five hundred for a street or alley that is not paid, uh, to cover the cost of application and the advertising, and a thousand for a paid street. Uh, the one in question is not a paid street, so that wouldn't...
No, it's just...
That wouldn't be in contention of what we're discussing.
Does it advertise that?
Yes. You have to advertise.
Does it sound about?
So this is just to keep us from losing money, basically? On, on something that somebody has requested?
Right, if it comes down, down the road, it'd be good to have this in place. So would I to go through this again?
I mean, honestly, I, I would see it coming over on anything paid. It's just where you have these right of ways, somebody designated years ago, and they just say, hey, I'm gonna be able to use that part of my property, so I'll have that right away closed. So I, that's the only time I really see this stuff.
So this easement, they're all closed, does it affect anyone? Is anyone reasoning?
My knowledge, no.
Well, why would you have to advertise it?
Because if they would use it as part of their property, they still would have to technically, that right of way is there for any individual to use. You know, the, the joint property owners could always claim that right of way for use. But if it's closed, then it goes to that property.
A lot of easement like that on private property was given by a person who was landlord behind it.
What this, this particular one here is, is years ago, there was discussion, I believe, about cutting a road from Delvee to neighborhood, and what was the name of, uh, Summer Place, is that presented from the top of the right way? From around Summer Place, that was gonna cut a road from there over to Delvee Road, and it was gonna be for future development. So that's why this right of way was put in, because they expected to see to possibly develop that area, they needed a road to get over to Delvee Road.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the fees of five hundred dollars for a unpaid and a thousand for a paid.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second to, uh, accept the fees that's presented by our Planning and Zoning, uh, Director Eagle, five hundred for a non-paid and a thousand for a paid street. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to item thirteen, is other business? At this time, do, uh, have any other business to be presented from council?
Our professors' complaints, musical, uh, Academy and Depot, at the intersection, uh, broken pavement.
That's, uh, that's already been handled, uh, at, is September the twentieth, I believe, the contractor scheduled to come out there and put new pipes in it.
We're not gonna put new pipes in it, we're gonna pipe line. Once there, the pavement we took out, and once it's fixed, it'll be good underneath.
So it's still gonna be gravel for a while.
Another week.
When it settles, okay.
Another week, but there won't be any, they don't want to tear anything out. They go in under the road and do everything.
Okay, good. We have one guess, and we have fifty of them. They did happen to problem for multiple years, but...
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, yeah, that's a major expense. Didn't we get an estimate of like forty-seven thousand?
Forty-two, I believe.
Forty-two?
September twentieth is when it's ever...
All right, any other, uh, business from council?
What's our status on the water line? Is Resil getting closer from, from Walker, Walmart, all the way to Food Line?
He, uh, he keeps jumping back and forth a little bit on that one, and some of the problems is, first of all, how far we're gonna go? Because most of our complaints are, most of our complaints as far as water quality are right around Delvee Road, running off from Delvee on West. Uh, so he's, he's looking at that, do we wanna go, do we wanna go from Mountain to Delvee and then go down Delvee Road to solve some of the problems? Or do we wanna keep going on out all the way to Grove? Or the new line will go for, uh, strap acres when that development comes on? And the other issue he's having is where he's gonna actually put the water? Uh, if you, on the, on the north side of one B D, that sidewalk's all the way down through there from most part, all the way to Delvee Road. So he would love to be able to stay right there, where we don't have to worry about getting any easements. Because we gotta get the easements, then we gotta go through all that process and get from the residents along the road. So he's trying to do it to where we can stay in an area that's just in our right way. And plus, we're dealing with DOT, so there's a lot of stipulations as far as when you can work and how, you know, what time you can start, what time you gotta be finished, and traffic control and whatnot. So he's got a lot of things he's dealing with, but, uh, you know, he's also starting to look now at the water line, and we might need to put in on Delvee Road, the Black Fox, or, or that area. But he should be able to bid it out very soon, it's just he's gotta make a decision on which way, and we'll have to make it ultimately make the decision, how long we're gonna drive and what's that?
I basically think about another issue I've seen, Pine Grove Avenue comes into one fifty before you get to Food Line. Two huge bubbles that usually gather there stormwater when we have a storm.
Pima with, uh, Pima pavement is gonna take care of that.
Okay.
Better than what he's giving us.
Now, that's the second, uh, street going into the old house or Pine.
Okay, you're talking about where we, uh, we go out there, pull a set high.
Y'all had him on everything. He's got an answer. At least he has an answer, so that's good. Okay, any other business? All right, do we have any business from staff?
Uh, Chris and I spoke to Mike Steele today. He was down at Westgate, putting down, uh, all stone to prepare for paving. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, he's gonna finish the culvert and be ready to pave Westgate. She'd be ready to wrap it up. And Mr. So, as we had told you, he's gonna be with this week. He is showing today, and hopefully this week, he'll be here to call it on him his part, and hopefully get through it. She told me all the material has come in.
Okay. Mike Steele say anything about the parking lot at Depot?
He did. He was actually planning on doing it on Wednesday, but he's got a, same thing. He's got a large job in Trappin', but he is gonna have to go to Trappin' and, uh, do some more there, so maybe next week. But he originally planned to try to do it on Wednesday, he's gonna have to try it.
Anything else from staff? Okay, our next item fourteen is, uh, consideration to enter into closed session in reference to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dot three one eight dot one one, parentheses six. And it's a cer- rather lengthy, but I do have to read this. And the reason for this closed session is to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer, or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear, or investigate, or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual, public officer, or employee. General personnel policy issues may not be considered in a closed session. A public body may not consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, appointment, or removal of a member of the public body or another body, and may not consider or fill a vacancy among its own membership, except in an open meeting. Final action, making an appointment or discharge or removal by a public body having final authority for the appointment or discharge or removal shall be taken in an open meeting. So at this time, I would need a motion from council to enter closed session. And I would remind all here that once the closed session has been ended, we will come back and do the formal adjournment of our meeting tonight, and give you an update of what happened in closed session. So do I have a motion from council to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Have a motion in second to go into closed session, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. We will be in closed session, we shall return.